Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we have three meetings scheduled for seven o'clock. We have a public hearing, we have a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, and that will be followed by the council committee of the whole. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and this is on...
Oh, I don't think you're not going to go.
Well, the green light's on. Should I start over again?
There you go.
Okay. We have a public hearing on a TIF district, and that will be followed by a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, and then committee of the whole meeting of the council. So I'd like to open the public hearing, which is on, "For the Purpose of Receiving Public Input Regarding the Proposed Approval of Redevelopment Plan and Redevelopment Project, Establishment of Redevelopment Project Area, and Adoption of a Tax Increment Allocation Financing District." And Brandon Boyes is here to start off the hearing. He's the Director of Economic Development for the city.
Good evening. I just wanted to summarize the memo that was given out to council for the benefit of those in attendance. Council first approved the resolution declaring the intent of the city to establish a new TIF district in downtown back on March 7th of 2016. On May 23rd, the council passed an ordinance that fixed a time and a place for this hearing. Subsequently, multiple notices have been sent out after also the establishment of an interested parties registry. All residential addresses within 750 feet of the proposed boundary of the TIF district, which I'll actually bring up here during the hearing if anyone has any questions about So all residences within 750 feet of the yellow line on this map received a notice of the availability of the plan, and furthermore, notices were sent to all taxing bodies by certified mail and the Department of Commerce. In addition, property owners were also mailed certified letters, property owners within the tax increment finance district. Lastly, there were public hearing notices published in the News Gazette on two separate The TIF Joint Review Board held its meeting on June 15th, and the JRB approved a resolution that reported their determination that the project area and the redevelopment plan satisfied the plan requirements, the eligibility criteria, and the objectives of the TIF Act. So that's a very brief synopsis of just the process that's led to this public hearing today. And also just to give you a good sense of the amount of notice and requirements that go into preparing to create a TIF district, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our consultant, Mike Weber of PGAV Planners. He's traveled from St. Louis here today. Just let him introduce himself.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to answer any questions that any of you may have, or respond to any public comment that you would like me to respond to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two people that want to testify. The first one is Ian Goldberg, and then Scott Glassman. Oh, you don't want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Ian Goldberg is in favor for himself and the Canopy Club and Manilows. Is that correct? And Scott Glassman, also?
Yes, I definitely support him.
He's supportive for himself and for Crane Alley. Is there anyone else who would like to testify at this hearing? Would you like to come on up?
My name's Daryl Cruz, and this probably will be my final statement to the city council with regards to TIF. The most troubling aspect of the new downtown TIF proposal is that it provides limited means for taxing bodies to financially benefit from TIF EAV growth within a reasonable timeframe. The city council's desire to incentivize economic development and improve downtown infrastructure and ambience is laudable, but the council's failure to radically recognize and address the negative long-term financial impact on taxing bodies is inexcusable and reprehensible. Even though local taxing bodies have been supportive of a downtown TIF and cooperative with the city for 35 years, they have received little financial benefit from TIF. In spite of the 7.7 million in EAV growth being added to the tax rolls, it is documented that it will take most taxing bodies 60 to 80 years, when adjusted for inflation, to recover their portion of the $34 million collected by the city from the previous downtown TIFs. No amount of TIF surplus distributions or joint city taxing body funded projects alters this hard, cold fact. This is the one undeniable failure of Urbana's two downtown TIFs. Because of the TWG project, the city well knows the new downtown TIF will be an early and continuous revenue boon, nearly $2 million annually to the city. On the other hand, taxing bodies will have to patiently wait 23 or 35 years to access their portion of property taxes generated by the TIF EAV growth. From the city's lack of response to this shortcoming, one can only assume the council is more interested in collecting its $45 million in TIF monies than how it might include language in a new proposal to help mitigate this loss of property tax revenue to taxing bodies over the course of the next two or three decades. When you make your decision tonight, you owe the taxing bodies more than the possibility of a couple surplus distributions, several program allocations, or the hope that decades from now, they too will eventually benefit from TIF EAV growth. For the significant financial sacrifice, 85 cents of every TIF dollar they will be making for the city, you owe them a greater degree of access and timeliness to the financial benefits of TIF EAV growth. If you were to add language to the proposal that de-tiffs projects of a specific monetary value after X number of years, the city could still incentivize all qualified private economic development projects, achieve many of your public goals, and provide more timely financial relief to taxing bodies. With a little more time, discussion, study, and creativity, a model downtown TIF proposal can be fashioned. That would be an economic development tool that not only immediately benefits the city coffers, but within a few years, could also benefit taxing bodies who serve our citizens and community.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Pastor Angel Johnson?
Good evening. I am Pastor Angel Johnson. I am a Urbana resident, and I'm just here to speak on TIF at this time. I'd like to just say that I've been misinformed about the TIF program, and I have been trying to get the TIF involved with our Angels Youth Center and a restaurant we was trying to open for three years now, where I haven't received the proper information. And what made me really knowledgeable of the TIF program, by me coming here, you know, to the meetings at night, I discovered that the TIF program helped people more so out of the community, to me, more than they try to help their own. Okay? I want to address that first, because several nights I've been here, and I heard Brandon, you know, welcome different people to our community and offer to help them with the TIF program. And I went to Brandon several times for three years now, and asked him to help me, and I told him what I was interested in doing. And the first location that I looked at, which is very important, because I live 1509, South Village in Urbana, I'd been working with the children over 20-some years in our community, all over Champaign, ran to Urbana areas. I looked at the, it's the location over on Philo, Mr. Farmers, he owns that location of Sunny Crest. I have looked into several buildings over there, and Mr. Brandon Boye told me that the TIF program don't go that far. So that was one of the reasons why I couldn't use TIF funding to go that far. Okay? Because you don't handle that area. Okay? I understand that. Okay? You don't do Philo area, that's fine. I went back on several occasions, and I spoke with him about opening up the restaurant, and we was, you know, really like to open up the youth center. Okay? So I was dealing with two different things, my husband, I, my daughter, you know, my family, my friends, all of us have been asking and asking and asking, how can we go about receiving help from the TIF program, and how do it work? Well, I never, you know, and every time, actually, let me back up, when we would go over here to the building right here across the hall, Brandon would not have time, and I understand he's very busy. And I spoke with him several times on the phone, you know, and I was waiting on him to come back, you know, to give me more and more, so I could find out, like, what's really going on here, why I'm not receiving this? And then I started meeting people with the casinos, and they're like, well, we receive help. I said, you did? Because I called to see if these casinos was from people who live here in our area, or was they from people out of state, you know? And they was, most of them is from out of state. And I said, hmm, that's awful funny, so I just talked to the owners, because I wanted to have the correct information. Okay? So I did my homework on there. Now, the casino is nice to have, you know, it's something for people to do in Champaign too, and places for Champaign people to go, and it's also a great way for Champaign, Urbana, to make money. Okay? I understand that. Here's my, my thing is this, you're offering people to bring liquor stores in our community is not, they don't live here. You offered people and gave them funding, or giving them funding and approving them for casinos, and they don't live in our community. Our community...
You have one minute, Pastor.
Okay. May I have just a little more time, Mayor?
You have one whole minute, if you want to get more after that.
This is the deal. This is the deal. How can we open up things that are hurting our people? People have came to me, I'm a pastor in the community, and they have gotten addicted to those casinos. They have asked us to help them with their bills. Okay? So how can we constantly approve Mayor, Ms. Mayor, to receive all of these things that are hurting our people, liquor stores? You know, the police is, they're taking our people to jail, you know, daily, because they're conduct. Because when you drink alcohol beverage and it don't mix with your system, then some things might jump off, right? You know, people act a little differently than they act if they don't drink alcohol. But being that the alcohol is so easy to get to now, okay, it's really a shame that we would rather have someone come in our community to damage our community, bring our community down, than to pursue helping someone who wants to help the community, help our youth. I can't tell you how many times I'm going to the juvenile, how many times I'm going to the jail cell. I was over there the other day for someone called me, a parent called me, helped get their child out of jail, see what's going on, and the lady, I walked in, and the lady was with me, said, how does she know your name? I said, hmm, she should know my name, should she? But the people at the jail, the prison, they know my name. I just walks in, never asks for ID or anything anymore. So we want to stop the crime, and we want to build our community on education. I'd like to see more education programs. I'd like to see more places for young people to go where they don't have to pay for the program. I am a non-for-profit 501(c)(3), and I have not yet been introduced in our community. And how I learned to come here and bring this to your attention, and Brandon never told me that, go over there to the city council and see if they can help you, and just let them know that this is what you want to do, Angel, you know, let them know. He never ever directed me this way, and I just can't believe it. I had to find out by attending the city council meetings, coming out to learn about other agendas, okay? So I thank you, and I wanted to address the TIF program. I need information, I'd like to have information on the TIF program before any changes be made, because three years ago, I should have received help from the TIF program.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a question for you from Dennis Roberts.
Yeah. So you're interested, and you're a 501(c)(3) institution, is that correct?
Yes.
And that may actually be the reason why you would not apply, you would not be able to receive TIF funds? Because we support in the TIF district business growth, and a 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit organization, so that's a different category? So we would not be able to use those funds for a 501(c)(3)?
That's fine, but three years ago, I was not non-for-profit. I became non-for-profit in, for profit in 2015.
Yeah. Well, then, your situation has changed.
Yeah. Three years ago, I was not. So when I went to him, asked him for help and funding, he didn't know nothing about it. That's all I'm saying. And I've come to get more knowledgeable, the more I come out here, I'm finding out that he did know about it, and he know how to also shake other people's hand, that's more important, I feel, than I am. And I feel that he played me to the left, because he didn't greet me or shake my hand. When I walked to Brandon, he looked at me like, what are you here for? What? You know, didn't, didn't befriend me or nothing, you know? Just pushed me off and shoved me and my husband off the door, like, okay, all right, yeah, all right, you want to open up, you know, whatever. Okay? So I don't feel like we was treated fairly, for one. And for two, if he had his reasons, he should have explained them to me, because I'm a person that understands, okay? I don't have no problem with rules. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Cho is in favor of the TIF, but he does not wish to address the council or the hearing. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on the TIF issue? Yes? Want to just come on up and say your name?
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Newman. I live at 301 West Griggs, Urbana. I'm on the corner of Griggs and Wood Street on the southwest corner, and I have a question for Brandon Boyes. I think I'm, I'm not in the redevelopment area, is that correct?
Brandon, you want to answer that?
Let's look at the map together. Could you state where you live again?
301 West Griggs, the southwest corner of Griggs and Woods.
Okay. So this is Griggs Street.
Right.
Here's Wood Street.
Right. And I live here.
So you are outside the area?
Okay.
And notices were sent to residents who live within 750 feet of the boundary?
Okay.
So that's probably why you received the notice.
All right. I have another question. This question is for Libby Tyler. And that's, because I'm active in the DNA Association, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, we feel a little disted at being called a blighted area. And I, I'm wondering, we have kept up our homes and put quite a bit of money into them, and we think kind of anchored that area from becoming a blighted area. So I'm kind of wondering if an area is deemed blighted, or, I forgot the other, oh, deteriorating, or non-compliant, or different from other businesses, what, what does the city have in mind? I'm thinking, you know, they could do anything from begin, more stringent enforcement of building code clear down to eminent domain, which would be the real extreme. So I'm wondering, what does the city have in mind as action against properties that fall into those categories?
This TIF district looked at commercial areas in the downtown, and the determination for blight or deterioration was according to the Redevelopment Act of the state. So it's really a commercial redevelopment, tax increment finance. For residential areas, we use different approaches, and one thing we've done in other parts of Urbana is we designate the areas as target areas for use of housing and urban development funds, and that requires that incomes in the area be lower than moderate income. Our target areas currently are parts of East Urbana and parts of North Urbana. We have not spread our target areas and large areas, because there's so much work that needs to be done in those areas. I agree that this is a nice residential neighborhood, it does have some older properties, and we do have, for rental properties, we have an enforcement program with a systematic inspection program, which I know you're familiar with. If there's concerns about properties, we have property maintenance and housing inspectors and nuisance inspectors. But it does seem to me that this is a stable neighborhood that's really got a lot of amenities in being so close to the downtown. There might be, some of the residential properties might need some help, and then we would love to hear from the Neighborhood Association on any of those specific concerns, try to address those that way. Also later on the agenda tonight is a purchase of some other properties on Wood Street, and that is a multifamily property, it's just south of where we were looking at, that's, that has declined and isn't very safe for multifamily.
The one on Locust and Wood.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that one, we're actually looking at an acquisition with respect to the Boneyard Creek improvements.
A green space kind of thing?
Yes. And we think that's another great amenity for this neighborhood. So I don't know if that helps to answer your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Eric?
If I can ask a follow-up question, Libby, is the, the designation of the word blighted automatically follow from if the income in the area is below a certain level, or is there, is there actually an algorithm or a formula, mathematical formula that goes with that word, or how does that work?
Well, different pieces of legislation use the term blighted differently. So the blighted that we talked about in this hearing is per the Redevelopment Act, and that big redevelopment plan that Mike Weber prepared has all the appendices that, that tell you what are the parameters that make something either blighted or a conservation area. It has to do with older utilities, obsolete buildings, plating that is not modern, deterioration of properties. So it's, it's really a property by property specific assessment. We look at for TIF tax valuation, declining property values more than income in the area. There are some TIFs that might be more residential and might take a different approach, but this is a commercial TIF, so we're looking at is the tax, are the tax revenues declining? So that's another parameter. And there's photographs in the back of the TIF plan that illustrates some of the findings that the consultant found to support the blight. But we use blight in other ordinances in other ways.
I, I guess I'll just make a comment that a more, a more value-neutral term would be helpful. I think it's a pretty much of a shock for a resident who is doing very well in keeping her home up, who really has good neighbors, a street with a vibrant new business, the African grocery store, to find that designated blighted, that's obviously not a, an appropriate characterization, so, so I think the language should be tuned a little bit differently.
Eric, it's not, it's not in the TIF, so it's not characterized as blighted?
Well, yes, and I do understand that, but, but, but in any case, the, I, I think that in general, the terms should not be as, as, you know, the terms should be more objective, not so value-loaded.
That is a value-added term. When you deal with TIF, it needs to be used, though, because of the Redevelopment Act, the state, so you need to make those findings, and every TIF I've worked on, people have taken exception to the term, but that's what the state says, so we have to use it.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Dennis Roberts has a question.
Yeah, and Dorothy? I've got a question for you, Dorothy.
Oh, okay.
So you're a member, and I'm probably sure an active member of the Downtown Neighborhood Association?
I am.
And has the association a action plan drawn up for their neighborhood? Maybe you did this maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Are you aware of your own, having your neighborhood action plan or a comprehensive plan for the neighborhood?
I'm not aware of. 503(c), and I, we formed a long time ago when Homestead was being built, and we have met erratically then. Diane helped us with the Halberstadt House, and we met then quite a bit, but we seem to meet only when there's a problem, and I don't know if we have an action plan.
Yeah. I can appreciate that. I mean, that's sort of true for the historic East Urbana neighborhood also, but we did file with the city a plan, and I don't know, it was like 18 to 20 pages of goals and overview and conditions in our neighborhood that we had concerns about, and if your neighborhood had that plan, that kind of a white paper outlining your interests and your concerns and perhaps your goals, that document could be used to address certain issues in your community which are outside of the TIF area, but you might be able to then garner CDBG grant monies to your neighborhood based on those desires and specified improvements the neighborhood itself feels is important.
Okay. I'll take that back to my association.
Great. Good idea.
Thank you. And you do have a beautiful legacy tree, which is not blighted. Janet Boobia, or Boobin?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Janet Boobin. I just wanted to let you know that I'm a huge fan of TIF incentive. Because of that, I decided to rehab the old MECO building, and I use the TIF incentive in Champaign, the old JBJ building, which is about 40,000 square foot, that was about seven years ago. Without TIF incentive, I wouldn't have done that, but I did that, and it's a huge impact on neighborhood. We generate big sales tax as well as property tax. We helped clean the neighborhood, and we have six commercial tenants and 12 upstairs, and it's all occupied, and they are doing thriving business. So without the TIF incentive, I wouldn't have done that, I wouldn't have doing the MECO, old MECO buildings rehab. So it makes a huge difference in economic impact on the community, and I just want you to know that TIF incentive does make difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify at the hearing? You want to come up?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I'd like to speak in favor of the TIF.
Would you like to say your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Dan Maloney, and I hope soon to be the proud owner of 136 West Main, the old Phibus Law Building. And one of the reasons why I've developed my interest in this is the opportunity to be able to use TIF funding. I will mostly like, most likely buy it either way. I will mostly like, most likely buy it either way, but with the TIF funding, I think it would allow me to do more interesting things than what would I otherwise be able to do. I mean, we have another law office building there, but I have some ideas that I think TIF funding would allow me to do more interesting things, it'd be more beneficial to the downtown. So I'm very much in favor of it. And I've seen all the different things that TIF has done, the current TIF has done, and how advantageous that's been to the downtown, so I'm very much in favor of it.
Well, thank you very much. We're glad you're investing in Urbana.
And I've got a question.
Dennis Roberts.
I seem to have a lot of questions, but, so is that, if I'm trying to remember, is that the Conan, Conan Building on the corner, that's the corner office building, is that correct?
It's, yes, it was a law office building, it's kitty corner to Bucy Bank downtown, so yeah, Main and Race.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I want to talk to you later on sometime.
And actually, just one other point related to that, my hope is potentially, one thing I'm investigating is looking at historic designation, and being able to leverage off TIF district funding would be, help make that more attractive to me to do that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, if there's no one else who wants to speak, I will close the hearing. Thank you all for attending. Next, we have a special meeting of the Urbana City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing? Here. First item is petitions and communications. I don't have any from the audience, but I would like to say we've, we're moving forward with this broadband purchase, and the city of Champaign is having a study session tomorrow night, which Urbana City Council members might want to tune in on. And one good thing is that the, the two cities and the university legal staff and the legal staff for UC2B have worked very well together, and I think that they really understand the issue, and we're not going to settle for something unless it really does benefit the community. So Jim Simon's going to be sending out some information to, to the Urbana Council, but you might want to tune in, as I said, on tomorrow night's meeting in Champaign. Also, we have a very serious problem. The state passed a temporary budget, but they did not include the social services that are really starving in this community, and we have lost seventy beds for the homeless people in recent months. This is mostly in the Times Center in Champaign, and also the Salvation Army. In addition, the Roundhouse Residential Facility for Homeless Youth closed on June tenth, and the Times Center has also ended its meal service as of July first. There's also been a loss of federal money as well as state money, and we're at a crisis stage, and it's going to get worse when winter arrives. So there's going to be a, a meeting of the stakeholders, the people who are providing services for the homeless this Thursday, to discuss how to respond to this crisis. It's going to be at the Salvation Army facility on North Market Street in Champaign, and if any council member wants to attend, please contact me.
What is the time of that?
It's at, well, it's Thursday afternoon, but if you're interested, we'll find you at the exact time, okay?
I believe it's at three thirty, yeah.
Three thirty, okay, three thirty. So, yes, Diane.
I had a question about the broadband. Will the Urbana Council be having a study session as well, or?
Yeah, we're getting the information out, and we'll, we have to have a meeting on, we're going to talk about it on the eighteenth, right? And then we're going to have a decision, a vote on it on August first. You want to say something, Jim?
Just real briefly, I will be, hopefully tomorrow, sending out a memo with a pretty hefty stack of information, because I know not all council members were involved in the early stages of UC2B, so there has to be some catch-up. And there will be a recommendation in that memo, which is based on the status of discussions with the prospective buyer as of this evening. And if that changes, I'll supplement my memo and possibly supplement the recommendation. You will be asked as a special committee of the whole meeting to meet next week, the eighteenth, after the regular council meeting, and then you will take up the matter at the regular August first city council meeting. We'd have it earlier, but as I understand it, there may be problems with getting a quorum.
Anyone want to address the Urbana City Council? We'll move on. We have one item, ordinance number 2016-06-049, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal 2016, 2017 for the JAG grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
I think you need one more person. Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.